Welcome to the Bossier City Regular Council Meeting. Today is Tuesday, December the 13th. Nope, it is December the 19th. Three o'clock, we're gonna have the call to order, followed by the invocation by council members Chris Smith and the pledge allegiance by myself.
Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day, Lord. We thank you for all the many blessings that you have bestowed upon us, Lord. I pray that you will be with each and every one of us, Lord, as we enter into this season of Christmas, Lord, and with our families. But more importantly, Lord, that we don't forget the reason for this season, God. And I pray that you will be with each and every one of us today in this chamber as we conduct the business of the people of Bossier City. Be with us as we drive home from here. In your holy name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call.
Bless you.
Mr. Montgomery?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Hammond?
Here.
Mr. Darby?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Free?
Here.
Mr. Maggio?
Here.
All are present.
All right, are there any announcements before the meeting starts?
In accordance with Louisiana Open Meeting Laws and the adopted Bossier City Council Meeting Rules Resolution, the city council asks for order and decorum at our meetings. Please silence your cell phones. Anyone wishing to address the council on any agenda items may approach and state their name and address for the record and shall be permitted three minutes to make their comments on the particular item up for discussion with up to four speakers per side. Any person making personal impersonate slanderous remarks or who shall become boisterous while addressing the council shall be forthwith by the president for them, barred from further audience before the council unless permission to continue be granted by a majority vote of the council. All remarks shall be addressed to the council as a body and not to any member thereof. No question shall be asked a councilperson or the mayor except through the meeting chair. All other audience members are asked to observe the meeting quietly. City council has appointed the city marshals as the sergeant in arms, and they have been instructed to maintain decorum and ask anyone in violation to step out of the meeting.
All right, recognition of guest Stacy Brown with the Shreveport Bossier Tourism Bureau.
Just hiding. Good afternoon, council. President Free, Mayor Chandler. Appreciate y'all allowing me to come before you today and give you an update on tourism. I promised to make it brief. I know I stand before you and the end of the year, so I will run through these very quickly, but you're gonna have the information so you can go through it in more detail on your own, and I'll be glad to answer any questions that you might have. I appreciate your appointees on our board. So for the Visit Shreveport Bossier Board, it's Ashley Warner. And for the Shreveport Bossier Sports Commission, it's Councilman Free, as well as Mr. Clay Bohannon, and we appreciate their service. You know, we couldn't do what we do without the staff here at the city and all that you do as a council, and we really appreciate your assistance. See if I can get this going in the right. There we go. So just to give you a little overview, this is what we do at the Convention and Visitors Bureau. We really work to make, not only is it a great place to visit, but to live, work, and to invest. Our two greatest accomplishments this year are with our Destination Master Plan and community-wide brand. The community brand is a really unique identity that we have as Shreveport Bossier and our value proposition. The Destination Master Plan really works to improve the visitor experience and thereby elevate the quality of life for our citizens. So we had a large steering committee that is actually still active. We got lots of community input, not only from individual interviews, focus groups. We also did a resident sentiment survey and some town hall meetings and had a lot of great input. One of the reasons for this is to increase the visitor dollars coming to our area to benefit a wider variety and range of local businesses and citizens. And why do we do it? There's 819 million. That's the number of dollars that were spent in Caddo and Bossier parishes by visitors in 2022. So we want to obviously increase that because not only does that provide jobs in our community, it increases businesses, increases the quality of life, but it also helps us pay less in taxes because they pay it for us. So with the Destination Master Plan, we have six key goals, and you can see those here. One of the things our consultant said, as I go around and talk to you about our community, I'm gonna ask you some questions, and if you say something really cool, I'll repeat it at some point, but I won't tell who you were. So one of the things he said I heard was, "I've never been in a place that apologizes more for itself than here." He said that was someone that was not from our community but lived here and loved the community. I have to say, I feel this way too. I'm not originally from here. I'm a transplant, but I love it. And I love to hear people saying how much they enjoy it. We have to use the river as a connector and not a divider. And for Bossier City to succeed, Shreveport needs to succeed and vice versa. So it's really important to work together to build this whole community, recognizing not only our differences, but also our commonalities and how we can build the community together. So people from outside see things brighter than we see ourselves. So often I'll hear from a visitor that says, "I had a great time in your area, but when I came back to the hotel, the front desk clerk asked me, 'What are you doing here?'" So unfortunately, often those not from here see all the great qualities that we have that sometimes we overlook. Every community has wards. Let's figure out how we can minimize those, but look to the bright side and the great things that we do have. So this is some of our brand promise. Two places, one heart, a little bit of this, a little bit of that. Things grow here, real people, real fun. One of the things they said is, "Your community doesn't apologize for itself. You are real, but you are also very friendly and welcoming, and you don't apologize for that." So Shreveport Bossier, this is the new logo for the community. And you'll see how the V kind of represents the old steamboat. You can see that. The P and the I connect, and again, the B kind of hyphens in between. So it really represents our community, and it's something that all of the different facets of our community can utilize. So two cities, one heart, uniting communities through tourism, sports, festivals, and events. So this year, we had 13 conventions and sporting events that had over a million-dollar economic impact. So these are not all the ones we worked on. It was 200-plus. These are just the ones that had over a million dollars in economic impact. Coming up for '24 and '25, again, these are just the ones with a million-dollar economic impact. It's getting really full, and we couldn't do them without your assistance. So we appreciate that. We also have a consultant coming in next month to really look at our sporting facilities. What do we have? How could we improve that? And what's missing in our community so we can build for the future? Kind of looking at our numbers, are very strong this year. This is year-to-date through October and has gotten even stronger since then. You'll see our meetings have been a little bit slower, as is nationwide, coming back, but the sporting events have been extremely strong. Very strong on the marketing side as well. It's very important to drive those PR value because it's more than we could actually spend in our budget. We've seen significant growth on the digital side. We also, through our Expedia campaign, have been able to attract a great return on investment from $14.2 to $17.4 per dollar we spent returned to our community. As you can see from our hotel growth, we have been very strong in our average daily rate, our ADR. Our occupancy has stayed pretty much the same, but we've been able to drive more revenue. This is, I get to be a little bit of a nerd with some of the research that we have. So this is total visitor spend, or as a percentage of total spend. So of all the money spent in restaurants in our community, 16% of that was spent by visitors to our community. So it's very important to our restaurants. Attractions, 25%, of course accommodations, 74%. Looking at our out-of-state visitors, they make up nearly 50% of our visitors to our community, and of course, they are the most likely to go to a casino. Our in-state visitors of our top six in-state, that's Monroe, New Orleans, Baton Rouge, Lafayette, Alexandria, and Lake Charles, what's really interesting is that 78% more likely to be seen at a healthcare facility. So that really shows how we are a regional hub for healthcare. The economic forecast, as you all know, it's a little bit rocky, but we've got some great things on the horizon. And with the Live Casino coming on board, we've already been working with them on marketing and starting to sell the property, even though it's not finished with construction yet. So we're very excited about that coming up. Looking at our strategic plan, as well as our three-year plan, you'll have that in detail. I know that's way too small to read. To give you a little budget highlight, so our different departments that we spend money, and of course administrative, conventions, tourism, communications, and sports. Our largest segment is actually sports, which is a very, very strong segment for our community. And the different divisions that we have, we have some ARPA funds that we are putting back into our community. We have the Holiday Trail of Lights, Boomer Bus Byway, the Sports Commission, as well as the Shreveport Bossier Film Office. And again, I want to say a special thank you to all of you for all that you do for our community. We had a great Independence Bowl, but there's still more holiday events to come, so just go on Holidays on the Red and see what you can do with your family throughout the rest of the holidays. And I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions, council? Thank you, Stacy.
Awesome. Thank y'all very much.
Appreciate it.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas. All right, council, I entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
First by Councilman Hammond, second by Councilman Williams. Questions from the audience, comments? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries.
All right, council, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of December 5th to any 23 regular council meeting in suspense with a reading.
So moved.
Second.
First by Councilman Williams, second by Councilman Maggio. Comments from the audience? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Witness opening of seal bids for P-23-Dash-16-2023 Citywide Street Improvements Phase 1.
Good afternoon, council. Mayor Chandler. The first bid we're opening today is for the Citywide Street Improvements Phase 1. There was one addendum on this project, and the engineer's estimate was $1,495,450.50. Okay, we had one bidder for this project. They did acknowledge the addenda. The bid bond is included. The base bid is for $1,472,177.75. There are alternates. Number one, $178,845. Alternate number two, $46,400. And I ask that you approve the reading of these bids, this bid.
So moved.
Second.
First is Councilman Williams, second is Councilman Smith. Comments from the audience? Any questions from the council? Cast your vote.
Motion carries. Witness opening of seal bids for P-23-Dash-19 Airline Drive Rehabilitation.
Okay. The bid for the Airline Drive Rehabilitation had two addenda. Engineer's estimate is $1,350,336. The first bid is from Benton and Brown. They did acknowledge both addenda. The bid bond is included, and their bid is $1,315,715. Okay, the next bid is from Ernest Contracting LLC. They did acknowledge both addenda, and their bid bond is included. The bid is for $1,089,774. And I ask that you approve the reading of these bids.
So moved.
Second.
First by Councilman Hammond, second by Councilman Smith. Comments from the audience? Any questions from the council? All right, cast your vote.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas. All right, unfinished business?
Adopting ordinance to appropriate $640,000 from the Disaster Reserve Fund for June and July 2023 storm, final read.
So moved.
Second.
First by Councilman Smith, second by Councilman Maggio. Comments from the audience? Questions from the council? Cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopting ordinance to appropriate $10,000 from the Disaster Reserve Funds to purchase equipment for winter weather preparedness efforts, final read.
So moved.
Second.
First by Councilman Darby, second by Councilman Smith. Comments from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries.
New business?
Introducing ordinance to approve Report of Change Order 1 for the Tinsley Ditch Reroute Phase 2 with an increase in project cost of $9,800 and additional 14 days, first read.
So moved.
Second.
First by Councilman Williams, second by Councilman Smith. Comments from the audience? Questions from the council? Cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introducing ordinance appropriate and additional $130,000 in funds from the Riverboat Capital Projects Fund to supplement funding needing to construct the new Wild Brook Park Maintenance Building, first read.
So moved.
Second.
First by Councilman Williams, second by Councilman Maggio. Comments from the audience? Questions from the council?
Yeah, Mr. President, I do. Can we get a little explanation? I mean, this project hasn't even started yet. We're already asking for more money.
Yes, sir. So the architect's estimate of probable cost is about $405,000 to build that structure. It's not fancy. It's a metal building, but it's got a pretty sizable restroom facility in there. It's replacing an old cinder block building that was donated to the city by the military back in the 50s. So the project, in my opinion, is needed to freshen up that facility, but I'm not putting it out to bid until I know I've got enough funding in there to do that. So based on his estimate and the available funds that we have allocated, we have about $300,000 and something thousand. I think it's written in your fact sheet there. I'm requesting additional funds for that, or we shelf the project. That's at y'all's pleasure. But I don't have enough funding to bid the project as it currently is.
And are the restrooms and everything, I mean, is that needed? That's just for the workers to use?
No.
And there, is this gonna be for the public to use while they're there also?
And it's, like I said, it's not a gold-plated facility, but as y'all have seen, construction costs are, they're not favorable to your pocketbook these days.
Been in it for also the people that works on that field, where they have meetings and things like that.
Yeah, there's a little assembly space there. We have a small office and then kind of a, call it a garage, if you will, to house maintenance equipment and implements and things like that. So there's some.
Lawn mowers and.
Yeah, you've got some fire code and fire separation and on and on it goes. You know, talking to some of the contracting community, steel prices are expected to go up. The energy code changed this year. There's just a lot of issues there that have driven that cost up. So I'm optimistic it'll come in less than $405, but that's the estimate that we've got based on our architect that we use for it, so.
There is office space for Dixon Baseball to.
There is a office.
A office.
Yeah. A pretty small office. Building's 30-foot by 60-foot, and probably a third of that's restroom.
Everyone need it too.
I think so, yes, sir.
I mean, is there anything that this architect has put in there that you see that we don't need?
No. You know, we did maybe some more high-end finishes in the restroom, but you're talking epoxy paint and things like that. You don't have fancy tile or granite. We're just talking, you know, if we have to go in there and hose the restroom down, we could do that. We put a hard ceiling in it so that you can't get from the restroom that's open to the public into some of the other spaces, but it's pretty vanilla, Councilman Hammond.
Just seems awful expensive to me for a 30-by-60 building.
I agree.
Very expensive.
Any additional questions? All right, council, please cast your vote.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Introducing ordinance to amend the 2023 Sewer Fund Budget.
So moved.
Second.
First by Councilman Smith, second by Councilman Williams. Comments from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introducing ordinance to authorize Mayor Thomas H. Chandler to sign and contract with Co-File Technology, Inc. for the preservation and image of minute books.
So moved.
Second.
First by Councilman Smith, second by Councilman Williams. Comments from the audience? Questions from the council?
Phyllis, is there anything you want to say about that?
Do you want to?
I'd ask Phyllis, anything she wants to say about that.
Thank you, council. I've sent you the information that we had received on this. We've identified, we have some old minute books in the back from the 1920s that need to, the shape of them is deteriorating a lot. And so we really need to get those preserved so that we can keep those. Those are permanent records. We can't get rid of them. There's nothing that, I mean, we have to keep those physical documents on file. And so this would go back and scan some of these old. And I'm also gonna ask, moving forward, if we can put some money in the capital budget each year to keep those books, some of those older books, get them, get those scanned in and get those preserved. And they're gonna come through, and whenever they're finished, it'll be, they will be scanned in so that they can be searchable. They will be in a fireproof box. They will be sleeved. It's waterproof, fireproof, and it's a really good program. And then we also have some other, there was a second proposal, and I'm working with the library to see if they are interested in getting those books. But we have some other books that are not minute books, but they're back from the 1920s as well, and some a little bit earlier. And it's like ledger sheets, old ledger sheets, bills, different things, different accounts, water billing and things like that that, you know, we, for 50 years, anything older than 50 years, we have to keep. But the Secretary of State's office said that if the library doesn't want it and we don't want them, then they will take them.
Thank you. Additional questions? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopted resolution authorizing the hiring or promotion of a utilities building and collection supervisor and backfilling any position this may create for the customer service department, first and final read.
So moved.
Second.
First by Councilman Smith, second by Councilman Williams. Comments from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopted resolution authorizing the reclassification of one captain position to a deputy chief position result in a net neutral change to the operating budget, first and final read.
So moved.
Second.
First by Councilman Hammond, second by Councilman Smith. Comments from the audience? Questions from the council?
Mr. President, I wanted to ask the chief about the position. How many chiefs do you, deputy chiefs do you have now?
Currently, I only have two. We have three positions available, but only two currently working, yes, sir.
So you have one retired?
Yes, sir.
Is that person still on payroll?
Yes, sir.
So how is it net neutral?
Well, this is not, this is a captain's position. And keep in mind that this is not gonna be fulfilled right away. It would be as some other captains. I've got several retiring right after the first of the year, and it would be once they're gone and off of the books. It would not be immediate. I just kind of needed a direction where to go, you know, after the first of the year. It would be within the parameters of the numbers and everything that I gave to y'all back several months ago.
Okay, all right. Thank you, chief.
And chief, I know, I mean, you talked about this, that this new deputy chief would be over nothing but patrol.
I can't say that it will be the new one, but it would allow my major divisions, yes, sir, to where I can take one over patrol, one over CID, and then kind of break every other division up amongst two more. It just, we get one major incident, and it wipes these guys out, you know?
With what you have retiring after the first of the year, do we have any people in the academy right now?
Yes, sir. Well, the academy starts in January, and as a matter of fact, I just signed it today. I think we have four that's in it, that need the academy, and then we have a couple that are post-certified.
So, you got about six?
Yeah, give or take, yes, sir. Maybe one or two more above that, but I don't remember exactly. But I just saw the academy paperwork today, so.
Are we still kind of running into the same thing on hiring, that more money's offered elsewhere and everything, the whole list?
Yes, sir. The whole list. It's an issue, for sure.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank y'all. Merry Christmas.
Thank you, chief.
All right, any additional questions? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries.
All right, reports?
Angela Williamson, Finance Director, Monthly Financial Report.
Good afternoon, council. Mayor Chandler, you have before you the financials for the month ended November thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three. Page one is revenue by fund. The city's currently thirty-two percent over budget. The increase in sales tax capital fund revenue is due to an increase in the current year's sales tax and distribution of capital. The increase in capital, Parkway Capital Fund, excuse me, revenue is due to funding of four hundred and forty-nine thousand received from the state for the Highway Seventy-One lighting project. The decrease in EMS fund revenue is due to a decrease in EMS billings of a hundred and fifty-eight thousand compared to November two thousand twenty-two, combined with ambulance alliance payment of three hundred and forty-seven thousand received in November two thousand twenty-two. Page two is expenses by fund. The city is six percent under budget. The majority of the increase in water fund expenses is due to increases in chemicals and electricity for the water treatment plant. The majority of the decrease in EMS fund expenses is due to transfer out to capital for the three hundred and seventy-four thousand dollar ambulance alliance payment received in November two thousand twenty-two. The majority of the increase in public service and sanitation fund expenses is due to an increase in right-of-way spraying for the street sweeping and grass-cutting department. Page three is the sales tax comparative report. Sales tax revenue is up two point eight percent compared to November two thousand twenty-two. Page four is the manning report. There are two more full-time employees than last month, and full-time employees are forty-one under budget. There's one more part-time employee than last month, and part-time employees are five under budget. Page five is the water and sewer utility report. Net operating income after debt service for November two thousand twenty-three has decreased twenty-three percent compared to prior year. Current year-to-date income has increased three percent from prior year and is twenty percent over budget. On a rolling twelve-month basis, net operating income is up six percent. Can I answer any questions?
Thank you, Angela.
Thank you. Happy holidays.
Thank you.
Engineering Department Monthly Project Report.
Good afternoon, council.
Thank you, Ben. Hey, Ben, if you don't mind, I know you're gonna go through everything, but the Carriageway, can we kinda get a little bit more detailed update on that when we think that it may be done? And I know they're making very good progress.
They are. You're seeing some of that lead and that cushion they have in their time start to slow down. They're getting into some of the detail work. I would estimate your probably late May completion, somewhere in there of next year, based on what we're seeing. Hopefully, the weather will continue to cooperate. They've been able to get a lot done. If you go out by the water plant, you're noticing a lot of cleanup. Most of the concrete work up to the bridge from Highway eighty is complete. They've got a few panels on Hamilton Road over in Councilman Maggio's district there where they're tying in. There's a few curbs and things that they're doing and just general dress-up, painting, things like that, like street lighting's complete. So, they're coming along. They had a meeting last week on coordinating all the concrete pores for the decking out there. So, they're really getting set up to get all of that done. So, it's moving along well. You'll start to see some of the signal poles go up and things like that, some of the final finishing touches. So, I'm pretty proud with the progress they're making there. It doesn't seem to be slowing down. I was a little concerned. The same contractor doing I-20, and they both seem to be progressing pretty well. If you've been through there, the work along I-20 seems to be moving, just perceptively as a citizen, faster than I would have expected. I don't know, I don't get to see those numbers. That's DOTD. We probably could find that out, but it doesn't seem to have slowed them down at all.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Shake some of the house when they're...
Yeah, they're breaking all the concrete up, yeah.
Do y'all know how many bolts are going into that overpass?
I can't remember.
It's forty over forty-eight thousand.
Yeah.
Todd was telling me that.
Tighten everything down.
Man up there, it's incredible.
So...
Thought that was a little bit of trivia, you know?
You can see them. There's brigades. Like, if you go out there on occasion, you'll see brigades of people literally torking bolts on all that steel. So, currently, that the number we're managing right now between design and construction, seventy-five and a half million. We've moved a little bit more into construction. There's one last project. We'll talk about that, the security complex today. It's one of those outliers. I'd like to get that into construction, but, so, we currently have seven projects in construction, eight projects in the design or bid phase, and four subdivisions interneering the construction phase with quite a few. We've had a number of planning meetings with some really interesting plan unit developments for Bossier City and a couple areas that we expect to see kicking off next year. So, the Carriageway we just talked about, and I was kinda telling you, just the long and the short is, is they're around nineteen days ahead. The good news is they're nineteen days ahead. The bad news is, is that number over the last few months has been going down by a week or so every month. But percent complete, they're eighty-two percent complete with seventy-nine percent of the time elapsed there. Tinsley Parking, they're actually striping that today. We expect striping to be done this week. Note that this percent complete and percent time elapsed is based on the end of November, so, we're showing at that point they were exactly on schedule. They're probably a little bit ahead of schedule out there, and we'll be opening that up here for the public soon. Tinsley Park Drainage Improvements, we had the little change order y'all approved. Thank you for that today. This is kinda showing you, there was a little area here where we had a side ditch and put a little piece of corrugated metal and filled that in, and that work's done. This project's complete. This will be the last time you see a slide on this, but that turned out really, really well. Bell Air Improvements, fourteen days behind, or a little more behind as of the end of November than they were in my prior report, but this project's almost complete. That's one of the landscape poles that they've got there. They've been installing those, so I expect probably by next council meeting, that project will be off the books. That's the hope, anyway. Tinsley Dugouts, you can see, we had just gotten done opening bids and working through some contractual challenges with the funding there. Got through that. They're actually working. They're a few days ahead of schedule. We had to do some changes in the field, working with Bossier Parks and Recs with the actual slab elevation. You could see that elevation on this particular picture. It walks basically from the slab right out onto the turf, and they were originally designed to align with the curbing there. So, we made an infield adjustment. It didn't cost the city any money. It cost us a little bit of time. The contractor wanted a couple more weeks to readjust the forms. I don't truthfully know that he lost much time, because about thirty seconds after we made the decision, everything was lowered and they were ready to go, but nonetheless, I think this is gonna turn out really nice. Scott Street Drainage Improvements, I've got that project at ninety percent complete. We are still waiting on Bell South to relocate some communication lines back at the street intersection, and once that's done, we'll finish up. But that project, all the major work on that is complete. Municipal Fire Station and Parking Lot Lighting, we have, we'll issue a notice to proceed. That notice to proceed will probably be first week of January. We're already working with the contractor to approve all the light fixtures and control panels and things like that. That's just an excerpt from the plans. So, the municipal complex, the security upgrades, this is a picture kind of of how that's gonna look when you come into the building. We opened bids, as you know, that was fifty percent over the anticipated budget. We had five hundred and fifty thousand roughly available for construction. We need another three hundred and sixty thousand with a little contingency fund there, and I prepared an agenda item for the mayor to review. He and I have met in regards to that. I personally looked at a few things with the contract, with the architect, to get a feel for why was it so much more. I don't know if this is gonna do, does this do a laser beam, Phyllis? Okay. So, they, you can see some metal elements there on the front. It's designed with a pretty fancy steel facade. That steel's called a leuka bond. We discussed changing the leuka bond to a smooth stucco. That would have somewhere around a seventy to eighty thousand dollar reduction in cost, and that was the major cost. There's a little bit of a leuka bond inside when you walk inside, but it's slick and modern and looks good. And then, the doors, you can kinda see there, the front doors themselves are all glass, frameless, bloom hardware. You're probably familiar with that, Councilman Hammond. It's good stuff. It's the front door of the city. That's one of the first things they're gonna touch when they go in. We were looking at maybe a twenty thousand dollar change on that. There were a couple other odds and ends that might amount to five or six thousand dollars. So, all in, in talking with the architect, maybe there's a hundred grand worth of reductions that we could put out there. It's at y'all's pleasure to do that, but my opinion, it just felt like keeping it the way it was. It wasn't a major reduction in cost, and we end up with everything really slick and clean and neat, and that's your front door. But I was charged to take a look at some of those things. The way that the low bidder got low was they got creative on how they were gonna access the site, what they were gonna do as far as pouring concrete and things like that. So, there wasn't a whole lot of change that we could do with that. We talked about insurance a little bit. The insurance was only around eight thousand dollars, so not a big expense, in my opinion. So, be looking for a ordinance on the second of January in regards to this for a little bit more money. We're gonna suggest to go into contract with the low bidder would be my suggestion, and if we need to do some value engineering on that, we can do that as we get moving. There are a couple other changes, but they really didn't do much to the cost, kinda time scheduling, things like that. So, if you've got any questions about that, you can ask me. And then, private development, this is actually a picture of, I wanna say this is canal place here. We still have those four developments going on that we've had now for a while. And then, this change is, this list is pretty much similar to last month. The one thing that we've got, the airline drive rehab project and the citywide street improvements, we opened bids on that today, got good numbers, and we'll be moving those on to the construction slides in the following month. Any questions? Thank you, gentlemen.
Our announcements. I have one for Mr. Mayor down there. Let's just see next year if we can start working on our entrance. I mean, there's so many panels cracked and now some of the concrete's raised up, you know? I don't know if we can get our guys to do a couple of the bad ones, to maybe get some of this, you know, we enter the...
Located right out here?
Yeah, we enter from, like, cross street from Tubbs. The street...
Didn't he replace that last year?
There's, most of them are cracked and like... From where Tubbs is that entrance?
Oh, okay, okay.
And then, when you turn left in front of the...
That's what I was talking about, that is.
Yeah, it looks bad. I said, maybe our guys can do some of this. Okay. I can pull some concrete, too.
All right.
Notice is hereby given that it's meeting to be held on Tuesday, January the sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, at three o'clock PM at its regular meeting place. The council chamber's municipal complex, six twenty Ben Road, Bossier City, Louisiana. The city council of the city of Bossier, state of Louisiana, plans to consider adopting a resolution ordering and calling an election to be held in the city of Bossier, city of state of Louisiana to authorize the renewal of ad valorem text during him.
Mayor?
Well, this being the last council meeting of the year, I wanna thank y'all for a good year that we've had this year. I think we got a lot accomplished. Got a lot of things going into next year that we're gonna even do better for next year. But I also wanna wish y'all a very Merry Christmas to the council and to everybody out there, and a Happy New Year. Thank y'all.
Same to you, Mayor.
And to the citizens of the city of Bossier, the city council would like to wish y'all a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Hope you have safe holidays.
Mr. President, I think this may have been Miss Germany's first version flight. I wanna give her compliments for the job you did.
Yeah, great job.
Very good. And what do we have on Thursday? Anything coming up on Thursday? Anybody?
We have what?
What do you have? We have a birthday party.
Yeah.
His birthday is a Thursday.
I guess it'd be yours.
Not mine.
Mr. Darby.
What are you just, what are you sitting there sighing for? You know. Happy birthday.
Thank you so much.
Hope you have a happy day that day.
I'm sure I will. Thank you, sir.
Meeting adjourned.